All right, all right. You must have went off and left a big cup there.
Hey Carl, good morning.
My daughter hadn't picked up any coffee. So I gotta get coffee.
You might as well drink some running coffee.
Yeah, drink some running coffee. How you doing?
Thank you, Dwayne. Welcome to January 17th Board Meeting. As always, we ask that everyone turn the phone on silent at this time. And we will ask Dwayne to lead us in prayer and will to lead us in the pledge. So, thank you.
Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning. God, let us, first of all, thank you for being who you are, God, for watching over us and caring for us and blessing us like you do, God, even though many times we really don't deserve it. Just forgive us for that. God be with us in this board meeting this morning. God, that every decision made here will be pleasing to you and a betterment of the county, God. Just forgive us if we fail you, in Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Well?
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Okay, first on the agenda is Mr. Ronnie Lott, County Clerk.
Mr. President, you should have before you the January the 3rd Board Minutes. I would ask if there are no changes to the Board. Please approve said minutes.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Sheila, second by Carl. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Concerned citizens?
There are none listed, sir.
Okay, at this point, I would ask for Kay Pace to come up. There she is. You can come up to the, to the mic if you don't mind, please. Good morning.
Morning, everybody. I appreciate you letting me have this one second. I won't take very long. I have enjoyed being your tax collector for the past five terms, but I will not run again. I want to go home and be with my family. And so, five, five terms and plus is long enough. And thank you so much for always being behind me and taking care of us. And I wish all of you the best.
Okay, we, we appreciate, and we appreciate what you have done, you know, in those five terms plus.
Mm-hmm.
Been very helpful to the county, as it shows.
Good.
Because that's a, that's a real tough job.
Good.
You know, a lot of money you deal with.
Yes.
And there's no doubt, a lot of customers, a lot of constituents you deal with and work with.
Yes, it is.
And we definitely appreciate your commitment to Madison County over these, over these years.
Thank you. I've enjoyed it. Maybe once or twice I, I didn't, you know.
Yeah, we, we understand.
But I've enjoyed it very much, and thanks again.
Thank you.
We definitely will miss you, Kay, for no...
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, Ms. Kay, it's been an honor working beside you. I think you deserve a standing ovation, not just sitting around. You know, another thing, too, we appreciate you coming in front of the Board and letting us know that. You know, instead of us finding it out on the last day to sign up, and this gives people time to think about and, and maybe sign up to, to run.
Yeah.
As tax collector.
They need that time.
That's right.
And so, my, my first duty was to come and let you guys know and, and so, you know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, with no more, with no concerned citizens, we will move down to item two, which is the Madison County Waste Water Authority Grant. Who has that on the agenda? Come on up.
Good morning, Buddy. Members of the Board.
State your name and...
I'm John Bernini with the Butler Snow Law Firm here on behalf of the Madison County Waste Water Authority. I have Buddy Vocal here with me. He's Chairman of the Waste Water Authority. At our last meeting here, the Board was kind enough to, to award some of its ARPA money to us, to the Waste Water Authority, so that we could apply to the state of Mississippi to try to receive matching funding from the state. So, we're here today to ask you to pass a resolution which would authorize the submission of that application to the state to try to receive that matching money. We've provided the resolution and a sub-recipient agreement to, to Mike, Espy, and Greg. We're obviously here to answer any questions you may have about that, but again, we're here to ask for your approval of a resolution to authorize us to submit that application to the state to try to receive matching money for the funds that you authorized to the Waste Water Authority.
Counselor, I got a couple of questions for you. Just to recap, how much do you get from the county?
The county was kind enough to authorize $2 million toward the Waste Water Authority.
And what do you, how much are you applying for from the state?
The maximum that, that we could receive would be an additional $2 million.
Okay, and this might be a question for Buddy. How are you gonna, what, what's the cost for the rest of the project, and how are you gonna raise that money? And when will the, the increase? I'm seeing things already pop up on the internet. When, when are the increases gonna be implemented to our sewer and water? And what, what, how much are we expecting the bills to increase?
Okay, just speaking on behalf of the Waste Water Authority...
Buddy, if you can, come on up.
Just speaking on behalf of the Waste Water Authority and, and not Bear Creek, which has its own challenges with, with the water service. So we're just talking about wastewater here. The plan is, this, this first $4 million, if successful, will be a, a down payment on a $27 million initial undertaking, which is a part of an $88 million or $107 million huge undertaking that will occur in the next, within 10 years. And that includes the plant expansion and so forth. So, the way it's gonna be paid for, obvious, I mentioned last time that the Waste Water Authority has been escrowing some capital improvement money. So we'll, we'll have a little bit of that money. Most of the money will come af, after the $2 million and the $2 million, if, if successful match, will come through borrowing from the SRF program. Now, when you borrow from the SRF program, you got to have rates that, that can do the debt service on the SRF loans that are done. So, we're, we're very soon, in fact, I believe in, in the next meeting, we will probably be entertaining a, an action to increase the, the sewer rate that we charge the members. Now, the members have to include the sewer rate that they paid to the Waste Water Authority, along with their other increased costs, as to what they charge the consumer, like you and I. So, some of those are already in the, in the making. I know the reservoir has done some, the Waste Water Authority's gonna probably take action on this one when we, when we have a defined goal as to how much we need and how quick we need it. So, I, I expect more than one rate adjustment in this fiscal year, which will end in September, September 30th, same as the, the county here.
Okay, who are the members of the Waste Water Authority that expect the increase?
It'd be the City of Madison, Bear Creek Water Association, Pearl River Valley Water Association. If West Madison gets into the pipe, they would be subject to it, or anybody else. If, if Flora, Ridgeland, or anybody wanted to get in, they would have to be subject to the same thing. And a, a major floer of the Waste Water Authority is City of Canton. They're not a member, but they still have to pay the rates.
Okay, will their rates, since they're not a member, will their rate increase be the same as the members?
Percentage-wise, it, it, it would be. But they, they'd pay a different rate being a non-member, so, so it monetarily, it's not gonna be the same. Their rate increase will be more.
And they're 50% of the flow?
Close. I, I mentioned that last time, but I think last date I looked at, they're about 45%. But they're very close.
Okay.
Thanks, Supervisor Baxter. But getting back to the grant that's on the agenda discussed, Mike, Greg, y'all looked at this?
Yes, I've read it and approved it.
Yeah, Mike and I have communicated...
It's not on the agenda.
It is printed and handed out to you.
Okay.
Rather than as an attachment to the agenda.
That's, and that's fine. So, are there any statements?
Yeah, comment. I'm glad to see you all on the agenda, not as a concerned citizen. More likely, I'm gonna support this grant, but I still have concerns. The concern, some of them is just what Trey mentioned, that you hadn't increased the amount of your members yet. Please don't come back asking for my support again, and you hadn't increased your member fee. There are other parts of the county that need sewage. About you all running you all's organization over the last 18 to 20 years, for very little that you had your users paying, it kind of set the other parts of the county back, because now you all got to play catch-up. So, let's get out in front of this game, not, not slagging behind. And only way to get out in front of it i, is to increase your, your amount that, that the users are using. Once again, don't come back in, in front of this Board, and I'm here, and you hadn't increased those rates.
Understood. Paul, thank you.
Johnny, with that, with that being said, because it is a concern to the Board of Supervisors that y'all move forward, you know, with what you were just explaining, Buddy. And, and if you would, maybe within the next 30 days, that y'all would bring something back to the Board of Supervisors of the actions that y'all have taken to help resolve this issue, you know, for Madison County, for that area. So maybe 30 days or 45 days, give y'all a little time to bring back what you, what you've, the actions that you've taken to help resolve.
By then, we will have submitted our application, and, I'm looking at Laura, do we know when the results of the awards will come through? Ladies and gentlemen, this is Laura Heisel. She also was, was Butler Snow and has helped with a lot of the documentation here.
Okay, come on, there you go.
Good, good morning.
Good morning.
To answer your question, Johnny, it will probably be about two months after the MACWA, or after the MCWI applications are submitted. The application deadline is January 31st. MDEQ is gonna award all the funds at that point, so, probably depends on how many applications and...
So, so around 1st of March.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Gerald, the reason I ask that question is I think it might be a good idea for us to come back to this Board, let the Board know the results of, of the award process and whether we received anything. And whether we do or we don't, the Waste Water Authority's probably gonna have to adjust its rates, but if we don't receive that funding, the rate adjustment may be more significant than otherwise. So, to come back and address the issues that you're talking about, I think it might take maybe 90 days to know for sure whether we get an award and give our Board another chance to have a meeting and make the adjustments that are necessary to, to proceed with the project, whether it's, we've got $2 million worth of county money, or $4 million worth of county and state money.
So we're, we're looking sometimes in April, then, you know, for y'all to be able to come back.
Yeah, I should. You know, we have a facilities plan underway right now that, that we're having prepared that part of that will be rate justification and rates necessary to service the debt, to make the improvements that we've just spoken about. So, I don't know how quick the facilities plan's gonna be, but that's another component which we can come again, you know.
That's right. We just need, we just need the next steps, what this Board has done, the Board, I'm talking about y'all, in front of the Board. So, let's just put it, you know, around first meeting in April, and that would give time for y'all to do what y'all need to do with the steps and the process.
Counselor, will there be any kind of notice given to the rate payers of a rate increase, or will they just get it on their next bill?
Waste Water Authority doesn't have retail customers, and so, the, the decision of whether to notify customers of rate increases will be at the retail level. So for instance, Trey, if you have, if Bear Creek is your provider, then you would get notification more than like, from, from Bear. If notification is given, it would be provided by Bear Creek.
I just want everybody to be clear that this, you guys have your own barring authority, your own rate increase authority. The county's helping you with ARPA money, but this is totally separate. Y'all are totally separate from us. We're just helping out.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just want to make it clear that this is the MOU from the county that gives the legislature confidence that the county is giving $2 million to MACWA, so they can apply for the match before the deadline. That's what this is. Ms. Bernini also made mention of a, of a sub-recipient contract. This is, that's not what this is. That comes later. That comes later. We don't have to do that right now, just like we gave the money to Ridgeland.
Right.
It's two, two separate transactions. So this is the MOU.
Yeah, and this is the same MOU that we assigned to City of Ridgeland as well.
Yes.
Okay, and that's, thank you for clearing it up, Mike. All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Banks, second by Mr. Baxter. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you, guys.
Looking forward to y'all coming back in around April.
We'll see you around April. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, next on the agenda is the public hearing that was rescheduled or tabled at the time, and I'm not sure the procedures, but I'm gonna ask the Board to have a motion to open up the public hearing for the...
Motion.
Got a motion for Mr. Baxter, second by Mr. Banks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The public hearing is open, and so, at this point, Ms. Smith, hold on. Hold on. I would ask Mr. Clark and Scott, Planning and Zoning Director, to come up and just two or three minutes, explain where we are as far as what's in front of us and what we're actually discussing today.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President and Board. Good morning. I've got here, first of all, I want to hand out to y'all, I got some questions about exactly, from some of you guys, about exactly where this subject property is. So, this map's already been provided in the petitioner's petition, but I borrowed it, and I made a few comments on it, too, to just kind of orient you a little bit, so...
So if you look on, on the map that I just gave you, everything that is shaded right there, that, that's colored in any color, that's the Livingston Township PUD. That was approved, I believe, back in 2009?
2010?
Okay. Anyway, as a PUD being an overlay, planned unit development over C1 Commercial and R1B Residential. So, what the petitioner is asking you guys to do is, the, the, the property that you see there in kind of the orange and the red, right now, all of that is commercial property, is commercial within, within the PID. They're asking you to, and by the way, all of the kind of greenish-yellow is zoned residential. They're asking to have that middle portion there in red rezoned from commercial down to residential. So, that yellow area that you see there is already zoned residential, and it's just to the north, I guess on the, I guess you'd call it the north end of Chestnut Hill, Part That red area there is, is not, is currently not adjacent to Chestnut Hill. It's adjacent to the town of Livingston, which is the commercial area that is, that's shown in red. So, petitioner filed his petition asking for that to be rezoned. This was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission back in September. Progressed here, I think the Chestnut Hill appealed that to you guys, which is why we're here today. Couple of things I want you to think about as you're listening to, or the, thinking about the arguments that were made back in December and here today. What's the law say about that? The law is that in order to rezone a piece of property, there either has to be one, a mistake in the original zoning. Well, that's not the case. I don't think anybody's here today arguing that. Number two, there has to be, the petitioner would have to show by clear and convincing evidence, a change in the character of the neighborhood and a public need for the rezoning. Now, what is the neighborhood, or what is a change? The courts have said that there is no particular test. As a matter of fact, I think they said it would be impossible to articulate a test as to what is sufficient evidence to show a change and a public need to support rezoning. So, my opinion, not being, I'm not a judge, but that means that it's on a case-by-case basis, which is what, you know, this petition may be different than another one that comes before you, whatever. So, listening for the, the evidence for the change in the character of the circumstances and the public need is, is what's presented by the petitioner. But the courts have also said that you guys are not restricted just by the evidence before you. You're allowed to consider your own common knowledge and familiarity with the, with the ordinance area. In other words, this property that we're here talking about today. So, what happens if somebody's not happy with, with what you say, or with, with, with the decision? Either way. I'm not, I'm not gonna dance. I don't know what y'all are trying to get me to do.
Not sure either, but hey.
But, so, what, what a court's gonna look like, look at as far as your decision goes is, if the petition is not supported by clear and convincing evidence, and you approve it anyway, that's likely to be overturned as arbitrary and capricious. That's the standard that you guys are under. Conversely, the flip side of that is, if the matter is fairly debatable, is the term that the court use, then your decision either way is likely to be upheld by the courts. So, that's kind of the landscape that's in front of you today. I think you guys are all sort of, kind of familiar with the property that they're talking about and the development out there. You've heard the petitioner, you've heard the opposition, and they're back in front of you today. So, is that sufficient for your...
It does, and I appreciate it. And one, one question, one answer you gave at the last public hearing on this, with the, with the land of the 22 acres now, and I'm just talking about now, which is not in front of us.
That's right.
Are the seven acres as the Board decides to move forward? Then there's a site plan that comes back, and this Board has total control over how many lots.
That's correct.
That's, that could be on either one of those pieces of property.
That's right. And, and not to get too far into platting and preliminary plats, but I do think that it's important for you to consider this, is that with the current 22.47 acres that is currently zoned residential, the ordinance allows, I'm gonna call it a not-to-exceed number, as far as the number of lots, okay? The, the quotient that the ordinance provides, when, when you multiply that times the number of 22.47 acres, that yields a not-to-exceed number of 65 lots that's available to be put on there now. Obviously, you guys still have control and could say yea or nay as to whether it's 65, or 5, or 20, whatever.
Okay.
If you are to, i, if this is approved, and that would give them a total of 30 acres that's residential, then that is a not-to-exceed number of 87 lots, again, subject to your approval. And the way those plats are approved is they're submitted to Scott and Tim for review, and then those come before you guys for approval. I mean, you probably get one every month.
Right.
But that's, that's sort of the landscape. As we go through arguments from counsel, if you guys have additional questions that you, you'd like me to opine on, I never pass up an opportunity to run my mouth, so let me have it.
Okay. Well, now, appreciated. Any questions from the Board to our, to Andy or Scott? If not, we've listened at the last board meeting, an hour or so, everybody putting the evidence on. Today, I would like to give the attorneys five minutes each to present what they would like to present, and if the attorneys are representing you that's out in the audience at this point, please let them represent you, and we would like to give anyone time to come up to the, in front of the podium that is not represented by their attorney at the end, when, when these two come up and the Board asks questions afterwards. So, that's how we would like to proceed with this, with this meeting as well. So, Steve, if you would, please come up. Ms. Smith, and your five minutes begins now.
Yes, sir. When we left here in December 19th, y'all asked us to go back, the parties to go back, and see if we could work something out. On January 9th, Mr. Scanlon, on behalf of his client, sent us a letter, and it contained five points. On January 12th, we responded to that letter, and to each of those points, I want to hand forward a copy of those two letters, and going to ask it to be placed into, into the And that letter, Mr. Scanlon, said that five different points are positions for resolution. First, right off the bat, they said, withdraw your rezoning petition. That's not a lot of compromise. Second, they said, we're willing to allow you 60 lots on the property that's already zoned R1. As Andy said, the maximum we could have is 65. And as you're gonna see, we have agreed to put less than 65 on the 22 acres. Third thing they said was, they want a green space or buffer zone between the area that's already zoned R1 and there's their development, Chestnut Hill. We said, fine, we agree. Fourth point, they said, they want input on architectural design. We said, fine, we agree. Then they said, if you meet the four prior points, we agree to allow you to have a secondary emergency access between the Shire Development and Chestnut Hill. Well, it's not us that needs a secondary emergency access. It's Chestnut Hill that needs emergency access, because they have the, they have the electric gate that might malfunction, and the fire department, the police department may need to get into their subdivision to render personal aid to someone. But if they want it, if they don't want that, we're fine with deleting that. But I know the county had requested that. So of the five points they made, we agreed to four. The only thing we didn't agree to is to terminate our, withdraw our petition. Next, we have stated on the record and in writing, we propose to put... Next, we have stated on the record and in writing, we propose to put 72 to 75 lots on the 30 acres, that's if you rezone the seven and a half. That's anywhere from 12 to 15 acres less than what the ordinance allows. We've stated that on the record. We've agreed to that. So we have virtually agreed to everything they wanted. The other thing is this, a lot of motion was talked about neighborhood. I did some research. I'm gonna read these out. And the expert for the objectors listed 11 subdivisions in the area. They had a lot of lots available, a lot of lots being developed, and subdivisions being developed. Of those 11, eight, and I'm gonna list them, eight have been platted or an additional part of a subdivision platted after your 2019 zoning map, zoning ordinance, and comprehensive plan were adopted. Pinehurst of Caroline, 2.7 miles away, platted January 23rd, '22. Catherine of Caroline, three miles away, platted May 6th of '22. Thornbury, three miles away, platted after, platted in April of 2019. And Westlake is three miles away, platted, plat filed August 8th of 2019. A New Construction Reunion, four miles away, plat filed August 4th, 2021. Autumn Crest, four and a half miles away, plat filed August 19th, 2021. Then you've got Charlton Place, 1.6 miles away. The first plat was filed in 2007, revised in 2011, and subsequent phases included in May of 2013 and September of 14. Finally, Proprietary Point, 1.7 miles away. It was platted December 3rd, 2019, revised in April of 2022. There's been change, ladies and gentlemen, in the character of the neighborhood. The 11 subdivisions they list as being lots to meet the demand that we've talked about and shown, and everybody's agreed to. The same subdivisions, we've shown eight of the 11 to have been platted after your 2019 rezoning map and comprehensive plan were adopted. That squarely meets the law and the test for changing, proving change in the character of the neighborhood and a need. Consequently, we request the board to approve our rezoning of seven and a half acres from commercial to residential. If you approve that, that will leave about 17 acres of commercial left, six and a half acres of which is already developed, which would be more than enough, almost double, that would be left for commercial development in regard to what's already out there. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, Steve, and I did, I think I was wanting to suggest, and the board went along with it for y'all two to try to come together. And what I'm, and I guess I'm reading this correctly with the information that you sent out to us, that they requested you withdraw your zoning?
Everything in their letter was continued upon our withdrawing our rezoning petition. So they didn't even, that wasn't even on the table for them.
Well, I guess that's what I'm really trying to read through, the second, third, fourth, fifth, is really dealing with the 22 acres?
It is.
Is that what it's doing?
Yes, sir. They're wanting, they're wanting to dictate to us what we do on the 22 acres that's already zoned R1. And we agreed. We heard, we've heard their concerns. We've given concessions. And we put, we put our concessions in writing. And we said, we're gonna have fewer lots on more land, and we're gonna have 12 to 15 lots fewer on 30 acres than you'd have on the 22 acres.
Okay. I'm sure there's a reason why this letter went out to you, but, you know, we dealing with the seven acres.
Yes, sir. That's all we're dealing with.
Not the 22. And I'm just a little confused if I was correct, that they, this letter is dealing with the 22 acres.
Yes, sir. And with all due respect, we're not dealing with lot size, house size, dimensions, or anything else. We're dealing with whether or not, the change in the character of the neighborhood and the need for housing. I think the need is clearly shown. I think this morning we showed by the number of subdivisions, they identified, ones we identified, the character's changed.
Other questions for Mr. Smith from the board? If not, Ms. Scanlon?
Thank you. I noted we were about eight minutes on that, so it would be okay if we could have the same amount of time and?
Five minutes, enough move forward. You might get nine.
Yes, sir. And I'll try to be brief. I'd like to yield a little bit of my time to Mr. Watson, too, because we sort of work it together with the developer. I'll try to be very quick. The first thing is, we sent a second letter that was not referenced, and perhaps this can clear up the confusion yesterday. And it clearly says that we would be, we, my clients, Chestnut Hill Association, would be willing to withdraw its objection to the rezoning petition as sort of a counterproposal. So you're really not getting the whole story when Mr. Smith?
Why would this letter, and I'm just reading this, you know, just looking at this, why would this letter, what was the intent of sending this if this was dealing with the 22 acres and not the seven acres?
Well, there's two reasons it was sent. First of all, though, certainly the supervisors encouraged the parties to try to come together, which I think was a good suggestion. We made the first move. We never heard from Mr. Smith or his clients. So we opened with that. The second reason is because if you look at the petition as a whole, it is not dealing solely with the seven acres. I realize that the rezoning request most certainly is dealing only with the seven and a half acres, whatever it is. But it is a larger concept project that is going to have, you know, a great change in that area. And so it's really a global discussion. And as you pointed out, Mr. President, earlier, you know, there's gonna be a site plan approval process that's gonna come later. I can't predict the future, obviously, but what we're trying to do is reach a resolution that would prevent my clients from objecting to later site plan submissions. And just trying to reach global resolution, trying to have a conversation about it. But again, I think, I really think the real story is that you're not being told the last chapter of the book. He's coming up here and saying they have no concessions whatsoever about rezoning. Well, that's just wholly untrue. And I have memorialized that in writing with authority from my clients, sent the letter to Mr. Smith. I didn't know these letters were gonna come up this morning. I was a little surprised by that. I thought this was sort of a settlement resolution between the parties. But I have, as I've been sitting here listening to Mr. Smith, emailed my third letter, or the third letter, to Mr. Higginbotham and Mr. Espy, and I would certainly, and I'm referencing it now. And so therefore, I would request that that be made a part of the record as well, with the, you know, consent of your body.
We would like to see what those letters say.
It will be printed out and delivered momentarily.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And so, so I really don't think you are getting the full story on that, because we, there's most certainly a position in the letter that says, we would be willing to withdraw our objection to the rezoning request if, you know, certainly this board has got the opportunity to modify a rezoning request, and we are not trying to dictate, was the word used earlier incorrectly, anything. Certainly, we have no authority to do that. The Board of Supervisors has the authority. We are trying to get to a point where we would remove our objections to it, and that's all we're trying to do, is reach resolution. So the idea that there's some sort of dictation of what we're doing is just simply not true. But to get back to the, you know, some of the larger points, and then I would like to give the balance of my time to Mr. Watson. I don't want to retread the tires on this, so I'm gonna be very, very brief. We submitted a long memorandum last month about this, and there's several major points. One is that it has to be in harmony with the comprehensive plan that was adopted by this board. It is not. That's, there's clear Mississippi law on that, and when you rezone an area that is not in harmony with your comprehensive plan, the Supreme Court has called that spot zoning and says it's impermissible. That's, that is a solid fact of law that the Supreme Court has never really even wavered on. And so Mr. Smith's clients are inviting this board to rezone an area from commercial to residential, which would not be in harmony with the comprehensive plan, which clearly shows that this area is intended to be commercial on the map, future land use map. Second is that, you know, you do have to show change in character of the neighborhood and a public need. We don't believe that there's been substantial evidence to show that, because there has not really been a definition of the neighborhood. I heard Mr. Smith just stand up here and talk about things miles and miles away, half a dozen miles away. We've submitted law on this, the Maryland courts, and Mississippi's law is just an adoption of the Maryland rule on this, that says you have to make and ascertain, you have to ascertain what reasonably constitutes the neighborhood. So the question is, is something that happens on the Nissan Parkway, or the Amazon Megasite part of the neighborhood of Livingston? We would submit that that's really kind of an absurd notion. And I would also draw the board's attention to the fact that in Mr. Smith's letter that he just handed to you, he even says in his letter that later on, once the Board of Supervisors adopts this change that's requested, then there will have been a change in the neighborhood by some future action of the board that perhaps he has a crystal ball the rest of us don't have, and I don't mean that to be, you know, snarky, but it's, the point is there's an action that we, we don't know that's gonna happen. This board has the discretion. But what we do know is it hasn't happened yet. But his position is, later in time, that will constitute a change in the character of the neighborhood, not on something that happens on the ground, but on a policymaking decision that happens in here, that will somehow backdate his request and make it supported by substantial evidence. I mean, it's a little crazy, and it's wholly unsupported by Mississippi law, as I pointed out in my letter of yesterday afternoon. So, you know, those are, those are some of the things that I wanted to respond to briefly. Very briefly, one further point, and I think this is probably where my clients are coming from. Mississippi law is clear that the courts presume comprehensive zoning ordinances adopted by the local authorities are well-planned and designed to be permanent. And that's from the Town of Florence versus the Seelands case, which I believe I've cited. That's 759 Southern 2nd, 1221, if I haven't. There's a strong presumption that the local authorities have carefully considered its current and future needs when adopting its plan for development, and there are reasonable presumptions that zoning ordinances are valid, reasonable, and for the public good. So in addition to not being in compliance with the comprehensive plan, not having evidence to show a change in the character, not being able to define the character of what the neighborhood is, not being able to show a public need for this type housing, for this type residential use, he has the burden to overcome this presumption of validity and that it's well-planned. And I just don't think that the evidence that's been submitted arises to that level. What I would like to do is let Mr. Watson speak to some of those points briefly in a little bit more detail, since we're both working together.
All right. Before you do, that's, and that'd be fine.
Thank you.
But I do have a question about the letter that you handed out, which was, I think the date was yesterday, January 16th.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you were talking about the green space, buffer zone. Are you talking about the seven acres or the 22 acres now? When you, when you?
Well, I guess it's?
You're talking about the green space and the buffer and?
That's a fair question from reading the letter, Mr. President. But I guess the answer is sort of what I said earlier. We're talking about a global resolution that contemplates it all.
Okay.
And as you can see, it looked like we were getting a little bit closer together. I don't think that we're there yet, but we were getting a little bit closer together. And so, you know, we were hoping to be encouraged a little bit, that perhaps there was gonna be more room for discussion to see if we could find some middle ground there. We did not expect to come up here and be told that there's two letters sent and no other letter, and that we're asking that the petition be withdrawn. That's just not true.
And also, on your second paragraph, or your third paragraph, you're saying, regardless in the fourth point, my clients appreciate your willingness to consider Chestnut Hill's input in the layout and design of the units. Are you talking about the 22 acres or the seven acres?
Well, again, I think it's, it's global, which I think certainly contemplates the seven acres. We, I certainly agree with your board, your zoning board's attorney up here, when he spoke to the fact that, you know, there's, there's these rezoning requirements that, you know, are in place. But you have to look at it since it's been last rezoned, and you have to see that there's clear and convincing evidence, you know, of what the neighborhood constitutes, whether there's been a change in the ground of the neighborhood. And, you know, I just, we don't believe that's been shown.
That's fair. Now, before you sit down, both, I want to make sure I need to, we need to know what you would like to enter into the minutes. You go first.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Everything we submitted last month, we would like to be a part of this record, the proceeding. That was when the public hearing on our appeal was initially noticed.
Okay.
As well as our letter in response to the letter submitted by Mr. Smith. So that'd be Mr. Watson's report, as well as a brief that I submitted from, those are last month. And of course, I mean, obviously, there's a map y'all are considering. I'm not objecting to anything else, but on behalf of my client, Mr. Watson's report, our memorandum that we submitted?
Well, everything you had at the last meeting?
Yes, sir. Plus the day's letter.
Which is, and plus this letter.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion from the board?
I'll make that motion.
To put that into the minutes?
Thank you very much.
Motion, Ms. Banks, I'll second. All in favor? Aye. All oppose? That is. Mr. Smith, before I go further to Mr. Watson, you would like to enter what into the minutes?
I'd like to enter everything that was submitted before the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. President, and also everything that I referenced or submitted to the board in our December 19th hearing, as well as my comments and remarks today about the 11, eight, 11 subdivisions I made reference to.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion? Ms. Banks, second, Mr. Griffin. And you have a copy of those subdivisions that you named off?
I don't have a copy of them, Mr. Steen, but I can't get a copy. I have, I have, I have a list, and I have the mileage.
We need a list to be able to get into the minutes.
I'll, I'll get those to Mr. Higginbotham.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Got a motion by Sheila?
Yeah, car motion.
Okay. Well, we got it. I'm sorry. You're right. All right. All in favor? Say aye. All oppose? Okay, hold.
I'm sorry. While we're putting things in the record?
Come on up to the?
While we're putting things in the record, I did have a handout this morning that I gave to y'all, and I would, since we're?
That's the map.
Kitchen sink. Yeah, the map. Right.
Do I have a motion to enter the map? I got a motion, Mr. Griffin, second, and Ms. Banks. Discussion? All in favor? Say aye. All oppose? Okay. So everything so far is entered into the minutes. Mr. Watson? Come on up and?
Thank you, Supervisor Steen. I'll be brief. The first thing, I want to remind you of some comments that I made last month, and that is that the evidence provided for a rezoning must be unique to the subject property. The evidence that the application has provided to you is very broad, okay? It's neighborhoods that cover, you know, that are miles away, and it's development that's occurring, quite frankly, in accordance with your plans. Development that occurs in accordance with your plans does not rise to the level of constituting a change in the character of the neighborhood. Now, do neighborhoods change when development occurs? Absolutely. But in the context of rezoning, the change, change in character of neighborhood is ordinarily an unanticipated change, such as the development of a new highway, or an interchange, or the introduction of utilities that were not anticipated. These neighborhoods in Lake Caroline and these other neighborhoods that are developing are very much developing in accordance with your zoning. It's no surprise that those areas are developing. The applicant has not demonstrated any change in the character of neighborhood that is unique to this property. And in fact, if you think about the evidence that's been provided, that evidence is so broad that it doesn't necessarily relate to the zoning classification they seek. It relates to simply residential rezoning. What if the application were for very high-density multifamily units? It, you know, it's just, it's broad evidence. So I don't know how you, as a board, can pare their evidence down to specifically what they're seeking today. What would be more useful to you would be if, and I don't think this information exists, but for instance, if there were a shortage of land which were zoned for residential purposes. There's not, to my knowledge. There's a substantial amount of land in Madison County that is zoned to accommodate residential development. In my report, I showed you a number of neighborhoods that in fact have active residential development underway. And in fact, right across the highway from this subject property is the Livingston Springs Pud. That's 330 acres, and I don't believe they've developed anything yet. Now, how many houses can be accommodated right there in the Livingston Springs Pud? I don't know the answer to that, but I suspect that you all, as your proven body, have an idea of that. So I disagree with, with the evidence that Mr. Smith has indicated as to what it means. And in my opinion, there's, they haven't shown, because there hasn't been a change in the character of neighborhood, and there's not a public need above and beyond that which your long-range plan already contemplates. that which your long-range plan already contemplates. And that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Any questions, uh, Mr. Bridges? If, if not, uh, thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Anything you need to enter into the minutes you would like to that hadn't already been?
Well, I mean, the, I, I guess this may be a question for everybody. I've referenced the comprehensive plan and the county zoning ordinance, and I don't know if they need to be formally entered into the minutes or if they're just, you know, because they're operational documents that you guys rely on.
That, that-
I don't know if they need to be in the minutes or not, but it's certainly important to, to this matter.
If it's the county's documents, they, they, they're there.
Right.
You know, so.
Okay. Thank, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges.
Can I speak?
Uh, are you represented by the attorney?
No.
Okay. Come on up and state your name.
I need an attorney.
That's totally left up to you.
Ah, nah.
If you would, uh, pull the, uh, microphone down a little and tell us who you are in two minutes, please, ma'am.
Sherry Diddens. I'm a real estate broker. I live on Highway 22 on Persimmon Lane and have been out there for 26 years, was instrumental in design, instrumental in the town of Livingston being created and the historical overlay district, which comes from, I believe it's, uh, Carl, tell me if I'm wrong, from Annandale Parkway all the way to 22. And then we have the 22 Highway designated as a scenic byway. Don't forget that. But I do want to tell you that the 330 acres across the street from, from where you're talking about is getting ready to be developed and it will be high density. What I would like for the supervisors to do is to concentrate more on continuing Gluckstadt Road 4 Lane, Catlet Road to 22, to give us new access into town and also to work with the state to get the interchange completed at Annandale Parkway so that we can get people out of, down from our area out quicker to the interstate so that the traffic in the morning with all the schools will not be so bad. We do not want to 4 Lane, for, I'm, I'm after you. Uh, we don't want to 4 Lane from Annandale Parkway to 22 because of historical areas. The Chapel of the Cross would suffer greatly and the old silo, there are other cemeteries along that. In fact, up on the hill across from this area, there is a cemetery that dates back to the 17 and 1800s. I also want to tell y'all one other thing you don't know.
If you could, just stay on the rezoning part.
I'm, I'm trying.
If you will, I know you're trying.
But, but, but the rezoning creates a lot of problems sometimes that you all don't realize. Under the lake behind Livingston, there's a cemetery and one of our governors is underwater because of poor zoning, because of poor, poor leadership. We don't want that to happen again. And there are a lot of things that are going on, especially MDOT. MDOT will not let you have but one entrance into Livingston, which is on 22. They won't let you have one under the hill coming off 463. Not allowed. And so, if we, if they try to get high density across the street, we're gonna have a mad house out there. Is that not right? I just, I think y'all ought to create, create some ways to get into town rather than more density out there. We created that area with acreage so that it would be country living around a history of wonderful people, and I'd like for y'all to consider keeping the historical district because it's a protection to all of us. And the rezoning across the street directly affects what they're fixing to do on, on the 330 acres, uh, across 463. Keep that in mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sherry.
Thank you, Ms. Sherry.
Anyone else? I was just about to ask, anyone else would like to speak?
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's not already what's been said, if you will, if you're going to speak-
I'm Baxter Burns, president of Chestnut Hill Homeowner Association. I've been serving on that board for four years, first one as vice president and the last three as president. I want to speak to the developer because I think you need to take all of that in consideration as part of this zoning. I, I could tell you about what I know about zoning and law and I write it on my fingernail. I, I'm, that's out of my league, but I do know about how negotiating with people and trying to be fair for everybody, I do know how that works. And Mr. Bolenbacher, we started, as I said, when I came on as president, I reached out. He, he shortly became the general manager of Chestnut Hill LLC. We had several issues that needed to be addressed, went to him, explained those issues. We've never been provided access to the lower lake as was promised and has been paid for since 2008 by the homeowners of that association. It's never been provided. The drainage adjustments have never been maintained since 2008. We had, he had common areas that he wanted deed to us. We were, we were okay with that. We had problems with the lower lake. He had a, he has a high emergency, I mean, a high-risk dam on that lake that's not been maintained. He has spent minimal amount to keep, keep the DEQ from draining that lake, but it's still not maintained today. All of these things, we negotiated with Mr. Bolenbacher and Andy Clark as his representative So, Andy can speak to what I'm fixing to tell you. Not one quarter has been spent by Mr. Bolenbacher or Chestnut Hill LLC on our subdivision since 2008 to maintain that subdivision. We had one set of dump trucks completely obliterate the road in front of Mr. Hamill's house, making it unpassable. Mr. Bolenbacher's, we reached out to Mr. Bolenbacher. He owns 26 lots in that lake, in that neighborhood. He doesn't pay one quarter. We reached out to Mr. Bolenbacher and said, "We need some help." Then, he said, his response was, "You have legal fees." I mean, um, uh, um, we, we won the lawsuit. The best, back in the day, Chestnut Hill won a lawsuit to, for the roads that had issues, they had a lawsuit and they won the lawsuit. There are proceeds of that sitting in CDs today. He said, "You have the money in the bank." Well, that money in the bank only addresses a small section of the road in the very back of that subdivision, not where it was obliterated in the front. We were able to expend some monies for, on that back section, but not where it was completely made impassable. He offered no help to help us. I mean, it, it's just been, it's been, and, and you wonder why we are upset with Mr. Bolenbacher and can't get along with Mr. Bolenbacher. We have a serious history with him where he, he may be the best, as Mr. Smith said, he may be the best developer in Hawaii and California, but I'll tell you what, he's not worth a damn for this county and has not been worth zero to us as that homeowner association where he owns 26 lots. Now, how can we think that he's going to be all great and good to be able to develop this next part next to us? We need, we need, we need definition from him on what green space is. That's what we asked in our rebuttal yesterday. We need definition from him on what architecture review committee, architecture review is. We can't have, I've got a young friend of mine that bought two lots next to me. He paid $225,000 a piece. He wanted to build his home, forever home on one, and he wanted to, uh, develop the other lot as a spec home. He is now looking at eight row houses coming into that, coming, coming into his lot. Gentlemen, that's, that's, we, we're not against development. We're absolutely not against development. We, we, when we came out there, we knew there was going to be 47 to 50 lots. We're great with that. We love Livingston. I spend a lot of my time in Livingston. The, the, we, we just need some control out there. We can't throw it open to a one-horse open sleigh and depend on somebody who has not given us one quarter since the day we started. And, and he's got a vested interest there. I, I mean, I, I just, uh, it, it has been extremely frustrating, as y'all can imagine. Our, the neighborhood has bore every bit of the expense to maintain that neighborhood 100% with him owning 26 of the 100 lots available. And it's just, uh, we're extremely frustrated. Want y'all to understand who we're, who you're dealing with, the man behind the curtain, because it's not Mr. Cox. Mr. Cox is a great guy. And, and I just, you know, we just really feel like that we need to, that, that we want to make that point, cross that point with, with you and ask for your help and guidance in, in watching this guy. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else that's not represented by the attorney would like to, uh, would like to speak? Okay?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Take it.
I have a motion to close the public hearing, have a second, uh, and, uh, discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? All right, it's, uh, time for the board to, uh, discuss or entertain a motion. So, what's the wishes of the board?
I want to say that I, I haven't seen a sufficient change in the character of the neighborhood, and I also believe, for me, I think I bought my dream home and in my neighborhood, if things were changed beyond my control from what I initially thought was planned, I would have a problem with it. So, I'll be voting no.
What's the wishes of the board as far as, uh, any other statements from the board?
Well, I'm gonna make a, a motion to approve the zoning. Uh, reason why? When the lawyer made the statement that there's eight out of 11 subdivisions that, uh, got changes that are developing, it might be a mile away, it might be three miles away. To me, I'm a country boy, a mile away is real close, is in the neighborhood. So, and also looking at the green portion on this map and that seven acres that counted in the red is pink, you're going with, uh, uh, you're going to be residential. You're changing the commercial to residential. The green portion is already residential. So, uh, that, what I'm basing my motion on, uh, is, is you're changing the commercial to the, to the residential portion that's already changed. So, that's my motion.
Well, I second the motion and, and basically on the same, uh, thought process that you have, understanding neighborhood and, um, in, in the context of the rural areas. But we're talking about 7.53 acres, and that's all we're talking about. Uh, all these other acreages on this map don't have anything to do with. It's just these 7.53 acres. And I agree with, um, the gentleman that's president of the homeowner association that, you know, Mr. Bolenbacher or whatever his name is and the previous partner that he had, did put a bad taste in everybody's mouth, I think, in, in some of our mouths. But, you know, I do have faith in, in, in Mr. Cox and, and I have discussed it with him, what, uh, what he's planning on doing, and I believe, you know, that he's a man of his word, and I think he's gonna do exactly what he says and make sure that, that this development becomes a reality and real development. So, and that, for that reason, that's, that's why I'll be supporting the petitioner on this and, and second in that motion.
All right, I just, I just want to make sure I understand the motion correctly. Uh, Ms. Griffin, your motion is to accept the rezoning, and I'm reading off of the, the agenda from C1 Commercial to R1B? Is that your motion or do you have a different motion?
No, that's my motion. That is the motion.
Okay. Ms. Banks, is that what you're thinking as far as second?
Mm-hmm.
All right, uh, any other discussions or any other, uh, motions? Okay, if not, um, I'm gonna agree with, uh, Mr. Banks as far as, um, the gentleman you mentioned in California. It has been a challenge to this board for the last 12 years, 11 years that I know of. He, he's, it's a challenge out there. It's, it's been something going on the whole time. And, uh, but I know the challenge is with y'all and him now with the homeowner association, not necessarily with this board, uh, with this seven acres or seven and a half acres. And, and, um, and I know the challenge in the field that you have as well. So, uh, but with that, we have to look at, is it a change in the character? And is there's a need? That's really what is in front of this board today. So, with that being said, all in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All oppose?
No.
Okay. Did you get the?
Three to two.
You got it? Okay. So, the motion does pass on a 3 to 2. I just don't want y'all to forget that zoning, uh, that the zoning board, the plat has to come through, the zoning board approved by this, uh, board of supervisors, which we control the number of lots. So, okay, moving on. With that being said, uh, consent items. I would like to remove item 30, 36 on the consent. Are there any other items on the consent that needs to be removed?
Uh, motion to approve, uh, consent item, all except item 36.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second to Mr. Banks. Uh, discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item 36, uh, this is dealing with a burial, unclaimed body. I just want to make sure legally, and I'm asking the attorney here because there's certain steps that we have to go through legally, and, um, I know the body has to be buried, but I don't want to stop that by any means, but I just want to make sure we go through the legal process.
Yes, um, excuse me. This is a, uh, technical matter. 36 is, uh, burial of unclaimed body. So, it doesn't say that the deceased is a pauper. It doesn't say that. So, if it, if he was a pauper, that means that he has no assets to reimburse the county to bury him. It doesn't say that. So, he might have assets.
What, what does it say that?
It says that the body is unclaimed. Now, under that statute, the board has to undertake a reasonable investigation, uh, about the status of the unclaimed body. So, we do have a letter from the coroner saying that the body was unclaimed. But the statute says that the board has to undertake the investigation. The board has, has not done that. So, we can do two things. We can acknowledge the coroner's letter that is unclaimed because he might have money.
Do you have that letter?
The letter, the other letter is, is in the record.
Yes, I got you.
So, then that could constitute your investigation. Or you could just call the hospice and just inquire whether he had resources. We don't know that. And then that would satisfy your investigation. So, it's just technical, technical. We need to close the loop.
Yeah, I know, I haven't been involved in this maybe a couple since I've been on the board and, and you're right. I mean, supervisors has, uh-
Right.
-a part to play in this thing legally and, and, um-
Mm-hmm.
You know, we just want to make sure we go down that road. So, I'm, I'm-
You could accept the letter. Call that your investigation, or you could ask the administrator to call hospice that he had resources to reimburse you. Call that your investigation.
All right, what's the wishes of the board?
I think we ought to have Greg call and investigate because if he was in hospice, odds are he has money or he had money. Somebody had money. Wasn't there a free?
If he in hospice-
Is that a motion?
If he had money in hospice, he got it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Sheila has a motion for administrator to call, uh, I guess to call whom?
We do have the name of the hospice company on the letter from the-
Okay.
-coroner, hospice ministries. They do some-
And that would be our investigation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second? Supervisor Baxter?
Yeah. Let me say this, um, the, the request is to bury this individual in, um, and the, and I guess the, the, the look or search for hospice or to find out whether or not he has, are there any funds available? That is for reimbursement of the county for any price tag that we may have too, and I guess then the coroner's saying something like 100 and- And I guess then the coroner's saying something like 100 and set it right up. So, that's, that's just fine, the 175 up is what we are looking at. It's not, it, it, it wouldn't do anything else. It would, we still want to be burying him in the cemetery over there that we're using for purpose, um, in, um, Madison County, so.
Yeah, I thought, and I'm going on by memory, I thought that the board had to, I don't know, to investigate by sending out notices or something somewhere or another as far as seeing if he does have any close relatives.
It says reasonable investigation.
Yeah.
I mean, advertising in the paper, I think that's what we did. And this has been 2012, 2013 since the last time that I, I think that this has come up. But I thought we had to send out, uh, something in the paper. You're right, Sheila, uh, am I not?
Absolutely. Yeah, this is the procedure we've, we've done in the past, but we can certainly change it. That's no problem.
Okay, we got, we do have a motion on the table to, and I think we need to go down that road regardless, but I think there's some more investigation, so if you.
Of course, you know, uh, this guy, uh, gentleman, uh, he dead and over there breathing and feeling home, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't leave him sitting over there all this time while we do an investigation?
I think he's in the.
We moved Carl's.
In, in the cooler. And we got the, uh, he, he may be in, in the county's morgue freezer.
The county morgue freezer?
He is. That's, that's according to the letter from the coroner. He's been in the county morgue since 1222.
Where that county morgue freezer at?
Is it people's?
Yeah.
No, I, I think we do have a motion on the floor, and I think we need to look at that motion, but I also think there needs to be some more, uh, legal work done and bring back to the next board. And Paul, I guess, we leave him wherever he is.
He froze.
You know, in the, in the freezer.
Uh. Get reimbursed.
Yeah.
It's up to them, right?
Yes.
Do what now?
They wish to bury him.
Mm-hmm.
And seek reimbursement. Do it to investigation.
That's it.
Yeah, that's what I was.
That's the way, that's the way we need to go.
Well, you can do that too then.
Now, let him just sit over in the cooler because we might need that cooler.
Yeah, and he's taking, he is taking up me the space. I mean.
And, uh, and Greg, if you will, when a letter come like this the next time.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and get that investigation if you can.
That's right.
Before the meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay, do we have a, we have one motion on the table now. Do we have a substitute motion or do we need one as far as to go ahead and?
Who made the motion?
Sheila did. Sheila's made the motion.
Sheila, you want to amend your motion?
However, it needs to be amended.
To amend the motion, I would say to go ahead and, and bury her, bury the person while Greg, uh, continued to seek investigation.
Yeah.
Would you amend your motion to that, Supervisor Jones? Okay, and who seconded her motion?
Carl.
Carl did. You're.
Or was it the?
It would be, well, in, 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 in that motion and well, in this, in this request, let's go back to, the request is that the, the, from the coroner is, is that we, that we pay the 175 dollars, uh, necessary for transporting and the transporting of this, uh, deceased body to that, to the cemetery. So, that question then would be, is that motion, do we need to, uh?
Include that?
Include the approval of the payment to the transporter of the 175?
I'll tell you what, let's, let's just do two different motions. Let's do that motion. We, we have a motion on, on the table first.
Yeah.
Is to go ahead and get in touch with the hospice center to, to see, uh, what's going on there by the administrator. So, let's go ahead and just take that motion as is from Supervisor Jones.
The investigation.
And who seconded that motion?
I did.
Supervisor Baxter did. So, that motion's on the table now. So, all in favor, say aye. All opposed. The second motion now, Carl, is to go ahead and pay the 175?
For the, yeah, to, to, to transport and, and.
And bury.
And bury, uh, Mr. David Johnson's, uh, body.
Okay, and continue the investigation?
Yeah, and continue.
By the administrator.
By the administrator.
That's Mr. Banks' motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Griffin, uh.
The coroner's letter.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that, we'll get that next. Okay, that motion's on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, do I have a motion to acknowledge the coroner's?
Motion to acknowledge the coroner's letter, which included the, uh, expense of transportation.
Okay, got a motion from Mr. Banks, second from Mr. Griffin. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, I think we have.
Woo!
Do you second that, the motion prior to that, that Mr. Banks made? To proceed with the coroner's?
I did.
Paul did, yeah.
That's 175, we did a lot of motion.
Yeah.
But we got it taken care of. Okay, next item is the business item. Ms. Bryant, can you stand up?
Now, we get to the, the boring engineering stuff.
There you go.
First item I have is the LPA 100 form. This is a standard form that MDOT requires when you do a project that they specifically fund. Uh, we ask that it be approved and authorized board president to sign for submission to MDOT.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion to Mr. Jones, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Banks, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, next item I have is the, the LSBP 4522, the Simpson Road Bridge Project is complete. The engineering department requests that the board approve the attached board order releasing Joe McGee's instruction from further maintenance responsibilities and to approve the attached joint letter of acceptance for the project.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Griffin, second, Ms. Jones, discussion, all in favor, aye. All opposed.
All right, this next one is a, a final plat, if you will, for Milltown Place Phase One. Uh, the developer met with me, Scott, and Andy and wishes to do a procedure that's not typical from our subdivision regulations. What they wish to do is provide us with a letter of credit for all of the infrastructure, public infrastructure that is needed, with the understanding that they will build house pads, and then after the house pads are built, they will get a final plat approved. Uh, the mechanism that we have to make sure that they get a final plat and the area is platted before residents move in is we will not issue a CO for billing permits until the plat has been filed with the board. So, uh, Ms. Gina does have the, the letter of credit, and so, um, I've got the developer here and of course Scott's here. If there's any questions that I've missed or need to be answered.
All right, so you just need approval then for the final plat?
We, well, we need approval for the amended procedure to our subdivision regulations to allow for this procedure to happen.
All right, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion, Ms. Griffin, second, Ms. Banks, discussion, in favor, say aye. Opposed? Tim?
Thank you.
The last thing before you come up, I know the road plan, it's not on the agenda, so it'll be on the next agenda.
Yes, sir, it will be.
And if you will, supervisors, uh, just make sure you get with Tim and work with Tim.
I've got information from all five of you. So, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
It will be on there next, uh, next meeting.
All right, you get mine next day or so.
Uh, I think I got yours.
You got mine?
I think you sent it to me last week. I'll double check, but I, I'm pretty sure I did.
Yeah, we need to look at that.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, actually, I know it.
It probably did increase.
Oh, boy, all right.
Tim, I have a question about, in Lost Rabbit, the, um, the, the, I guess, the developer in Lost Rabbit, one of, one of the developers in Lost Rabbit, he's, he's, has finished and it's been out over a year, and I think he has a, a bond or something up on the roads. Did you look into that and see?
Okay, the only one I'm aware of is, um, Terry Lovelace.
Terry's.
Okay, okay, I'll check on that one. I know there's a section that he's about done with that he should be ready to pave, so we'll check on it.
Okay, then, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. All right, Mr. Weeks?
Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, good morning.
Morning.
Uh, one item I have is a mining operation renewal. This is Bobby Elmore, Highway 22, Richton Road, Supervisor District Four, is for a year extension.
And I'll make that motion.
Motion, Ms. Banks.
Second.
Second, Ms. Griffin, discussion, favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion passes.
That's all I have.
Mr. Espy?
Oh, man.
Hickam Bottom? Hickam Bottom?
All right, morning, board. Uh, two things for you today. First is item 52, which is a request to award the bid related to engineering services for the CDBG application to Wagner Engineering. Those applications, we received four responses. They were scored by a scoring committee. Wagner came out on top.
I'll move.
Got a motion, Ms. Banks, second, Mr. Griffin, discussion, in favor, say aye. Oppose?
Great. Item 53 is a contract for JH&amp;H Architects as it relates to the design of a new Madison County Court complex. Um, I made no secret that my intentions were originally to take this out all the way to plans, and then I heard the price and said, no, let's, uh, let's stop at schematics, which is the step right before plans. Uh, we can get a reasonable cost estimate. There are two options presented here. The first is for a renovation of the existing courthouse, kind of an addition. Uh, we can take that out to schematics along with a new design. And that's what those con, that contract is for, it's to get both of those to that schematic level where we can submit them to a third-party cost estimator, and that third party can tell us to a reasonable certainty how much it would cost to build both of those options.
Okay, do we have any questions for Greg?
Yeah, let me make sure I'm understanding here. Uh, you looking for us to prove for, for us to, uh, for JH&amp;H to come up with redesigning the old courthouse and of a new courthouse?
That is, that is what is being proposed, yes. Uh, a, a schematic design of a renovation, because that's going to come out cheaper, to make it, to put it bluntly, that's going to be considerably cheaper than building a new one.
Okay, uh, I think I spoke to you briefly a few days ago about possibility if we do something to that Fred's building, that we might put, uh, the, uh, county judge and youth court judges over there. Wouldn't that free up space in the old courthouse?
It, it would, and there is an item for executive session related to that, yes, sir.
I think that's going to be an executive session, so we may want to hold off on this until, until we look at that.
Somebody should have told me, I kept my mouth quiet.
That's, that's okay. So, why don't we, why don't we do that, just hold off on this item until after executive session?
Yes, sir.
Then, and then we all may know a little bit more about the situation.
Yes, sir. That's it for me, other than the item for executive session.
Thank you, Greg.
All right.
Okay.
Our com choler, son?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Item number 54 is approval of the budget amendments and interfind cash transfers.
Motion for approval, second by Supervisor Jones, discussion, in favor, say aye. Oppose? Okay.
The next items, 55 and 56, is approval of the general claims docket in addition to our recently approved invoice from Wynn Management, um, invoice number 10923, that's presented before you, and the approval of the payroll docket for January 4th.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Banks, second, Ms. Griffin, discussion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed. Item 57?
Item 57 is approval of the planning and zoning commission.
Move.
Motion, Ms. Banks, second by Ms. Jones, discussion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed. Uh, item 58, I would ask, uh, Mr. Baxter to take over on that one.
Uh, approval of the Fleet Corps docket.
Yes, sir, approval of the Fleet Corps docket.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Twenty lot, county depository.
Before I start, I have a new person sitting next to me, is Gina Permenter, who is, Cynthia is going to retire here this following year. She's going to be assisting me in, in matters, uh, taking notes. I'm not sure as far as your board secretary choosing, but, uh, that, that is up to the board in a future date.
Okay, thank you. Glad to have you with us.
I'm here for the, uh, depository bids. Uh, after the analysis of 2023, we advertised as required by statute. Proposals were received from three banks, Origin Bank, Renasant Bank, and Trustmark Bank. All met the qualifications. After review of the proposals, I would like to recommend to the board that we designate all three, Renasant Bank, Origin Bank, and Trustmark Bank as the county's depositories eligible, eligible to receive and hold deposits from county office. I further recommend that Renasant Bank be the county's primary depository. It will hold the county's deposits, except for the initial deposit of $10 million, and to Origin Bank as the county's secondary depository. That's my recommendation to the board.
What kind of interest do we get on the money we keep in Renasant?
With Renasant, it'll be 3.8%. With Origin, it is three and a half, and Trustmark, I believe, came in at two and a half? Two and a half from Trustmark.
Motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Ms. Baxter. All right, next is Sheriff Tucker. Sheriff?
Mr. President, members of the board, one item, if you could acknowledge, uh, our December 22 meal, inmate meal log, and I will present it to the clerk, uh, for, to be maintained in the record.
Do I have a motion? Motion, Ms. Banks, second, Mr. Griffin, discussion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
That's it.
Thank you. Old business. New business, uh, we'll wait on that. So, I know we have a, uh, executive session, so, uh, motion, go in closed termination?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Banks, discussion.